Are you calling the meeting to order?
Hi team, let's stand for the pledge allegiance.
...... of the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, good evening everyone, happy Thursday and happy March. Before beginning our agenda, I'd like to present Carlos Romero, a senior at Chelsea High School, who will be singing the song True. They're gonna grab him. That way, right, the audience, yeah. Awesome. Hi Carlos. Carlos, thank you for being here. Do you want to share anything before you begin?
I'm Carlos Romero, I'm a senior at Chelsea High School. The song is called True that I'm going to be playing. It's just instrumental, so I hope you enjoy this. Is it okay if I lower it?
Absolutely.
Oh no, I don't have a strap, I'm sorry. Yeah, I can't lower it, I'm sorry.
Thank you Carlos.
You're welcome.
Alright, thank you again Carlos for presenting your wonderful song to us. The next item on the agenda is school committee minutes, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 6, 2020. Do we have a motion to accept? Great. Next item on the agenda is presentation by Dr. Almi Abeda, Bridges to Success 2.0 in alignment to budget.
Thank you Chair Garcia, I'm gonna go down, I'm gonna go down and present over here. Okay, good evening. Chair Garcia, school committee members. Tonight, what I'd like to do is, I'm gonna connect, try to connect all our dots and what we've been doing over this budget process. And so, I'm gonna start off with framing our strategy and our vision, and then I'm gonna go into the results of our survey. So I hope you will, I'm real excited about the survey because we had a nice turnout and a lot of responses, and so hopefully this will give you the information you need as we prepare for our budget and consider everything that is before us and all the priorities. So, our mission. Chelsea Public Schools is a gateway school system that welcomes and educates all students and families, and we believe that that is core for what we do here in Chelsea. And you have seen this many times, but I continue to show it because this is our vision. At the end of the day, this is what we want our students to graduate with when they graduate from Chelsea High School or Chelsea Opportunity Academy. We want our students to be digitally literate, biliterate, and college and career ready. We want our students to be able to jump into whether it's college and career ready and prepared to succeed. And at the end of the day, that is our goal for our students, and this is why the vision of a graduate is so important to us. Over the years, the teachers and the staff in Chelsea Public Schools have worked extremely hard. I am fortunate that I get to carry the torch because there has been a solid foundation that has already been set in Chelsea Public Schools. The work that has gone before me has set such a solid foundation that I could, that we as a team could build upon. So I'm very excited about the foundation that is set, and I want to highlight just a couple of things, a couple of highlights. This past year, we had an increase of 14 points in MCAS math. We also had an increase of 13 points with our English language learners, and I just want to stop and pause because we get so many, we have so many English language learners in our system, and so once our English language learners come to us, we educate, and we do a really good job with our English language learners. And I wanted to do a shout out to Judra, who's over the bridge program at Chelsea High School, since she just walked in. And we are seeing tremendous growth in math in our English language learners in the bridge program, and they are doing some phenomenal work. So once we get our students here to Chelsea Public Schools and they stay here, we do a phenomenal job with them. And we also improved 22 points with our lowest performing students. That is huge, so we are working hard and we should be very proud of the work in Chelsea. And we're gonna continue to just build upon that work. So as part of my entry plan, we did, I did a lot of listening and learning, and and so you'll see, we did so many community conversations, we had seven, seven total community conversations, and at each community conversation, we asked three questions. What's working? What are we proud of? And where should we invest? Because we knew that Student Opportunity Act could come, and it did come in November, and so we wanted to be ahead and prepared. So I combined my entry plan along with preparing for Student Opportunity Act. So we gathered a ton of information from multiple stakeholders, and then we, as a team, the cabinet team sitting here, we analyzed that data as a team, and then we came up with four key themes. The four key themes and what we heard fell into these four buckets here. One, rigorous teaching and learning. Two, expand access, opportunity, and equity. Three, family and community engagement. And four, operations to support teaching and learning. You will hear a lot about these four buckets in the survey and in the coming months, as this is gonna be part of our strategy. So now for the exciting part. What we heard from the Student Opportunity Act survey, and I want to thank our Vice President of the Union for pushing on this issue, Catherine. So Catherine came up here one day and said, "We would like more input, we would love to have a survey if you could do something." So we worked quickly to get a survey out in Spanish and in English. We heard from our constituents and we moved, and so I am proud to present the results of this survey, and again, I want to thank you. So, in our survey, we had 358 complete responses, and we had responses from a broad range of stakeholders, and we posted the survey online for two weeks to gather information. We had 55 parent and community members, I hope everything's okay, 31 students from the high school, 234 educators, and 38 other staff, meaning they weren't teachers but maybe support staff, and there's many other kinds of staff that we have in a school system. So if you think about it, our staff, other staff and educators, we had 76% where the survey was coming from our own staff. So the details from the survey, the intent of the survey was to provide feedback to us on expenditures of the funds from the Student Opportunity Act. Respondents were asked to rank in priority in the four different areas, first, second, third, what would be priority, so you'll see that. Okay, so the first one is teaching and learning, that first bucket, and we asked all, everyone to rank all of these categories, raise teacher pay, increase common time, invest in middle grades, add more STEM, more emotional support for students, increase special education, increase ELL staffing, and more after-school and before-school programming. And that was that category. For the next category, expand access, opportunity, and equity, the categories were expand early college, expand dual language, increase art, music, physical education, increase special education in the middle grades, add more after-school, before-school, add more college and career, add programs for laptops to go home, and expand our dropout prevention program. So mind you, these are all the things that we had already heard from the seven community conversations and that we had heard from all of our, the 50 individual stakeholder meetings as well. So we're just repeating what we heard, and now we're saying, please rank these in order. So family and community engagement, invest in more parent liaisons at our schools, invest in education of school site councils, invest in improving our website, and invest in translation and interpretation services. And then the last bucket was improving operations to support teaching and learning, invest in more technology, better communicate and share our successes, automate our business and human resource systems, and create space for Chelsea Opportunities Academy and the Intergenerational Literacy Program. So now, oops, I'm not paying attention to the, so now what we did is, the survey, these are the survey results for the rigorous teaching and learning, and you'll see the bold is highlighted, and the number one thing, and the number one, and not surprising, is raise teacher pay. And number two was more emotional support for students. Number three was increase special education, and number four was increase ELL staffing, and then five was invest in middle schools, six, before-after-school program, and then increase common planning time and add more STEM. So the top four are what we're highlighting right now. As I go through this, and what I've been telling everyone is, this is year one of the Student Opportunity Act. Rome wasn't built in a day, so we can't do everything on this list, so that's why we ask people to prioritize, because we are going to take what we can do for year one and do the best that we can do in year one, and then we'll continue to build. So as, the point of prioritizing is to say, this is most important, and this is what we'll try to do in year one, two, and three with our Student Opportunity Act funds. So the second one is expanding access, opportunity, and equity. The first one was increase art, music, and physical education. The second is increase special ed programs at the middle grades, and the third was more after-school, before-school programming, and the fourth was add more college and career counseling. And then five was dropout prevention, expand dual language, add program for laptops, and expand early college. The next one is family and community engagement results. Because there was only four, we asked to prioritize two. So the first one was invest in translation and interpretation services, and the second is invest in more parent liaisons at our school. And then the last bucket, the fourth pillar, is improving operations to support teaching and learning. So invest in more technology and technical support, create space for Chelsea Opportunity Academy and the Intergenerational Literacy Program. Those were the top two in that bucket, and you can see the way three and four panned out. Then we asked, which area of the four buckets should we invest in first? And it was rigorous teaching and learning. And then, oops, yeah. And then what level should we invest in first? Middle schools was first on that one. And then we did have an area for comments, and so I just took a sampling of the comments. So the first comment was, is, "Please keep everyone in the loop. You've done a good job so far with community meetings, providing information in multiple languages, and using social media to your benefit. Keep doing that." Another comment was, "Please add paraprofessionals to larger first-grade classes." And we heard that theme come up, so there's, what we're, what we'll need to do is think about how do we invest in this in first grade, and something that it's definitely on the radar. Invest in educating parents about their rights, especially in special education. And another comment was, "Thank you for asking our input, we appreciate you taking the time and space to listen to us. Even if you may not be able to implement every wish, it makes us feel valued that you listen." And I think that's the crux, and that's, to me, I saved that comment for last because that was the whole intent of this survey, and I love the fact that this person recognized that we may not be able to do everything, but thank you for listening. And so that's, that's what, I agree with this comment, and we know, again, that this is a rollout of seven years. We are going to do the best that we can in year one to make sure that our, our achievement gap populations, our special education and ELL students' needs are being met, and so we are working diligently with all the information that we have to present a budget to you that represents all the stakeholders and also our students, and meets the needs of our students who are most in need. And I'll finish again with the vision of a graduate, because it's so important that we stay focused on what's best for students, that we keep our eye on the prize and ensuring that we are closing achievement gaps and that our students are graduating from Chelsea High, college and career ready. When they're going to college, they will not have to take remedial courses, and they will be successful and feel like that they can compete and be proud to be from Chelsea, because that's what we want to instill in our kids, that there is pride in this community, and when you graduate from Chelsea High School, you will compete whether you go into the workforce or into college. And so I want to thank everyone for participating in the survey, and thank everyone for just being involved, and I'm just so grateful to have this information. And so are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, let's open it up, thank you Dr. Abeda. Let's open it up to the school committee, are there any questions for Dr. Abeda? Go ahead, Ms. Alfaro.
Just wanted to acknowledge, thanks to the group of the Chelsea Collaborative, I know that they put the members and they put parents and students, and thank you for the rest of the team that came there and make theirself flexible to be access, have access to the community, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you Dr. Abeda. Next item on the agenda, we will open it up to public comment, so anyone who would like to state something, go ahead and walk up to the podium, please say, state your name and your address, and you will have four minutes.
So thank you, my name is Clarice Vega, I live at 116 Clark Avenue in the city of Chelsea. Before I speak, I want to give a shout out to Jose. Where's Jose? Jose? So Jose, Jose's this young man from the high school, and he was instrumental in speaking in different Boston State House public hearings in order for this Promise Act or Foundation Formula or Student Opportunity Act to pass. So I am so grateful that it was a Chelsea young man, not a gang member like we are, you know, always target or label, a young man from Chelsea that was the poster child in order for this Foundation Formula or Opportunity, Student Opportunity Act to change, and for this to happen, not only for the benefit of our Chelsea Public School System, but the communities that were not getting the funding that they needed to get. So Jose, muchisima gracias, sumamente orgullosa de ti, gracias. And I know that he's, you know, he got permission to do it from the school, they missed a couple of days, but he did an amazing job, and he was always in suits, all dressed up, representing the students. So, but I'm here today because seeing everything that we all contributed, right, when we have community meetings and stuff, I think that the uniqueness of this amount of money that this Chelsea School System is gonna get, is for all of us to keep an eye on how things are being done, and for all of us to continue to contribute. Just because we gave you all these great ideas, because we were all part of it, right, it doesn't mean that we did our job. Our job must continue in working with the school committee, with the administration, and the students to hear what their concerns are, the teachers to hear what is it that they need. When I, when I saw that salaries is one of the first thing, you know, we lose so many teachers every year, every year, because there's no, there's nothing to retain them, there's nothing that says that I get paid a good salary in order for me to stay in the Chelsea Public School System. And these teachers work very, very hard as educators to provide, to provide quality education, but I think that I am not surprised. And of course, everything else in terms of the way that the priorities were set, you guys echo every, I think, community meeting that was held in different spaces, like office, Greenroots, and other locations in the city, like literally echo what the priorities were. And so I'm extremely happy, once again, it doesn't mean that I'm gonna be happy, you know, six months from now if we are not doing what we're supposed to be doing, but I'll be back here, just reminding you about the promise and the priorities and what we are supposed to be doing with this new funding. Muchisima gracias, y a los estudiantes y a las personas que nos ven en la televisión, hay diez millones de dólares para gastar, para mejorar la calidad de la educación de los jóvenes de Chelsea, para que vayan al colegio y no se queden en la calle, y junto lo podemos hacer. Muchisima gracias.
Hi, my name is Myra, and I am from, I have been in Chelsea since 1988. I live in 59 Addison Street, and I am a parent for an 11-year-old child. I was part of their student act, and I did it because my son has a DHD combined. I was part of it, and now I'm very happy because, you know, we met what we want, we fight for what we want, because we need a lot of support in Chelsea Schools, because we know that teachers are doing a miracle there, because they having kids that they have 33 students, now we are like 28, but I mean, I hope that we can, you know, put it more down, because, you know, there are combined with the special need kids and regular kids, and I know that, I mean, the special kids need more support than the regular kids because of the needs that they have, and I'm very happy that, you know, everything that we go through right now is really happening, and I'm a fighter, and like I said to the principal in the Clark School, I am a fighter, and I'm gonna fight for whatever we need to get for these schools, and if I need to, you know, be part and go to talk whoever I need to talk to support Chelsea School, not only the students, but teachers too, because if the teachers don't have the support, they're not gonna do their job. And if the students, they don't have, you know, the support of the teachers, they're not gonna do well. So I think I'm very happy, thank you for your support, and I hope this can be an option, and can be a, we can make a big difference, and we are here to support you, and we're gonna continue, I always told them, you know, whatever you need from me, just let me know, and, you know, I'm here to support because I'm part of the community, my son is in the school, and it's not only for my son, it's for everyone, because, you know, everyone, you know, education is for everyone, and nobody leaves behind. And the quality that we have to give, we know that we have to support them in anywhere, and any, any things that they need, we have to support them, and I'm very happy, thank you, to everyone who has been part of this, and I'm really very happy that we get the $10 million, that we can make a difference in public schools. Thank you.
Hey everyone, my name is Katherine Anderson, I live at 28 Warren Ave in Somerville, and I'm a seventh and eighth grade special education teacher at the Brown and the Vice President of the Chelsea Teachers Union. I just wanted to come forward today and really say thank you to the school committee and to the superintendent's office for taking feedback really seriously. I think that it's been a really refreshing change to see a survey implemented, to see those results published as quickly as possible, and to have an opportunity to have this information while we're still in the process of finalizing the budget, before we've passed the final budget. It's encouraging to see that voice coming from the community, and encouraging to see that there's opportunities for that to be implemented as well. I'm really pleased to see that there's alignment that our English language learners and our special education students need the supports, and that people agree in that across the community, and I'm really looking forward to an ongoing budget process that keeps including voices and keeps including feedback. And I'd also like to say that I know that last school committee meeting, there were about 21 people who came and spoke about the guidance counselors up at the high school, and I know that the superintendent took that to heart as well, and so I'm really appreciating a trend of hearing community feedback and acting on it and following up and taking that seriously, and I really hope that we can continue to see transparency and action on community input, and I'm also hoping that that includes a slightly more detailed budget the next round. We're really appreciative of all the information around positions, and I think a lot of teachers and community members are interested in all the other programs that go into educating our students and how much those are costing as well, so we can kind of see the different ways that we're spending money all across our grade levels. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sam Baker, I live at 3 Ganji Terrace in Woburn. I've been a teacher in Chelsea Public Schools for 14 years, first at the Brown and now at the high school, I'm an instructional coach. I just, it's truly nice to be speaking here. I just, it's truly nice to be speaking here on this budget round with a smile on my face. The last four years hasn't been the case. I just wanted to reiterate how important it is that we are using this money to replace positions at the middle school level and special education. As a former middle school teacher, it's extremely important that we have as much special education support at the middle school level as possible. I just want to reiterate that that needs to stay. If anything changes, we need to, don't change that. I also want to just note that adding a dean at the high school is a need. People hear dean and they just think discipline, discipline, discipline. It is so much more than that. The deans at the high school provide vital support to the students and teachers and they really act as a wraparound support with school counselors and administrators and teachers. So I just wanted to speak in support of the fourth dean position as well as the adding of the other positions, especially at the ninth grade level. So, thank you very much.
Sorry, I'm a little nervous, but I appreciate you. I appreciate you all listening to what I have to say. So in my experience, I would like to see more educational programs. So I go to a school in Wakefield called Northeast Metro Tech Vocational School. So I would like to see more career opportunities, same way I get to have them after high school. I would like to see that in Chelsea, because I feel like it's so important about to care about a kid's future and what they want to do in high, after high school. And like I have to travel 30 minutes every day early in the morning just to go to school, whether I like to prefer to stay in Chelsea. Chelsea has always been a comfort zone for me and I hate leaving it, because this is my home. And I would just like to see Chelsea grow in many different ways that we're able to use this money to be in good support for kids like me. And what I've realized in my school and not just my school, but also in Chelsea High and many different schools around me, that we need more diversity of teachers. So knowing Chelsea, we have, you know, a diversity of many people that come from different, different countries. And Spanish is a very important language in my community. So feeling that we're able to connect with our teachers is, it's more than special. It's, it's kind of like love and caring to a student, because they don't have to feel like they're any different from their own country. And I know like, coming from a different country into the United States is a big change. And we would like to make them more comfortable and able to adapt to this environment, even if it's hard. So having a diversity of teachers will help a student see that they will succeed in life and that it's not, the impossible is not... You get what I'm trying to say? But along with teachers, we'd like to recruit more teachers, because I've seen coming from my friends, they say that there's many students just in one classroom. And that also involves having multiple smaller classrooms. So a teacher is able to, a teacher is able to support every child and their needs, whether it's math, science, et cetera. And that's all. I would like to say.
I don't know, my name's Joseph. I'm a senior at Chelsea High School. Sorry, I look a little beat. I just came from translating at the parent teacher conferences over there. But I really liked the budget meeting today. I'm so glad we don't have to cut anything and I don't have to come argue for French department again. I'm very glad. I would like to see more foreign languages offered at Chelsea High, especially because a lot of the neighboring cities do offer different diverse foreign languages to be learned. I'm also very happy with, at first I didn't realize the importance of a dean, but after speaking to a couple of different people, very glad to see that we want to incorporate another administration specifically, you know, I would like to see a dean, because I know a lot of people, like Mr. Baker said, see their dean as, oh, something for discipline, something they run away from, but they're more than just that, they're another support system, like my other administrators, like Mr. Martin over here, awesome guy, I love talking to him and being a really great connector. But I also would like to advocate for better, well, I don't like better class sizes, because a lot of the times I was in a class with 30 other kids, 28 other kids and one teacher and I felt like that teacher was like running. She like looked like Speedy Gonzales, like speeding through like the class left and right, because she had so much to handle and didn't seem like she's had enough help. It also inspired me to also look and pursue into mentoring my younger classes. I'm a mentor now for a pre-calc class and I see that, you know, it does really help a teacher to have somebody, even though like I obviously don't have a degree or like teaching thing, but I can help like, you know, lead a student into understanding what they have to do and what they should learn. So I really think it's important to invest in not only bettering their pay, but kind of like managing the class sizes. I also think that bettering the teacher's pay is something that's huge. I love that, because I've had a lot of teachers, like this year I had to struggle to find teachers to write my actual recommendation letters, because a lot of the teachers at Chelsea High don't stay for more than four years. And that's really hard, because who's going to be there to talk about me? Who's supposed to be there to, you know, who am I supposed to get to know and, you know, create this bond and with, especially like these teachers, like I see them every day, I see them more than I see my parents in reality. You know, my teachers almost become like a piece of my parents, I guess, because they teach me things that, you know, sometimes my parents don't have the time to teach, because obviously they're so busy trying to take care of me. So bettering their pay, I think, is something that's awesome, especially in Chelsea High, because I think I have a lot of wonderful teachers that aren't appreciated and are underpaid for all the extreme work that they do for me. And also last thing, I shouldn't, also think that we should really, really, really focus on social work all throughout the grade levels, because a lot of times students like myself, we get confused with what a guidance counselor is versus what a social worker is and we use our guidance counselors as our social workers. And being at Chelsea High, there's only three social workers to talk to, I don't know, like a thousand something, no, more, like more than that, kids. And it's a lot, like if you do that math, I think I broke it down last time, it's like the teacher has to meet, like if she meets one student, that one student gets to see their social worker like maybe like once or twice every three weeks, which is, you know, sometimes ridiculous, because a lot of kids are going through things and they need somebody to talk to and they might not have somebody to talk to. And especially when teachers aren't staying and they can't build that bond, they might not be able to talk to somebody and find, you know, comfort in them. So really investing in the counselor department is something I think that's really important, not only for emotional support, but also college support, because I really didn't know what FASFEL was and if it wasn't for my guidance counselor, I don't think I would have completed it and I wouldn't be able to go to college, because I don't think I could afford it. But that's it. I'm really happy and thankful for your time. Thank you.
We probably should have let Joseph go last. My name is Mark Martno. I am the principal of Chelsea High School. I have two addresses, 8 Harborview Road in Nahann and then 299 Everett Ave here in Chelsea. I just want to say thank you to everybody through this whole process. It's been a lot, it's a very different experience this year, like versus last year. I'm a lot calmer this year than I was last year, if you remember at this time. I do just want to acknowledge that it is nice to see that what we feel at a school is represented in our community. The need for ELL support, support for our students with disabilities and meeting the needs of all of our, our students, it, it's there. And it's nice that we're restoring positions at the high school that'll make that possible. Now, we're not restoring all the positions, that's fine. This is year one, I completely understand. But the student support area is, is an area that, as Joseph said, I think, you know, we really want to look at how we're working together and how we're truly wrapping around supports for our students, because the way that we've done business and how we treat our students as human beings has evolved. And structurally, we're starting to evolve. And I just hope we keep this conversation going in the future years of how we truly, truly wrapping around to support students like Joseph in every possible way to make him as successful as he can be. And I'm super proud of Joseph, wish him the best in the future. But thank you all so much for your time and all your thoughts in this process. Thank you.
Any other comments before we close the public comment section? Going once, going twice? All right. So, thank you team, to all the students, the parents, the teachers, the staff members who have continuously fought for a quality education for our students. I couldn't thank you enough. On behalf of the school committee, we thank you day in and day out for coming here and advocating. So yeah, thank you. All right, we will continue with the agenda items. Next on the agenda is reported the superintendent's of the schools, student achievement.
All right, I would like to call up our assistant superintendent, Sarah Kent, to go over our student achievement data. Thank you.
Good evening, how are you? Tonight, for the indicators of success, we'll be looking at the monthly indicators. We also have the winter indicator, as well as one of the annual indicators. The dropout, sorry, graduation rate from last year has officially been tracked and released by DESI. And then our usual appendix of mobility. So if we could start on page three, looking at our daily attendance. So we are making our target in six grades. We're very close in another four. And we're still struggling in the high school grades with attendance being in the 80s. We are about 2.4% below our goal at this time and we are 0.7% lower than last year at this time. As you know, we have added an attendance officer, which will be serving K to eight, but that will also give our existing attendance officer more time to focus at the high school. If you could turn to page four, the indicator three, we only get to talk about that twice a year, but today is one of those times. This test is called nonsense word fluency correct letter sounds. It sounds crazy, but let me just sort of explain to you what that test is. That's a test where we give students words that don't make sense to see if they can sound them out correctly. So words like fed or things that kids don't know what they are, they're nonsense words, more than Dr. Seussian kind of nonsense words. And as kids learn how to read, they actually do poorer, more poorly on this test, because they make it into words that they know. Does that make sense? But right now, in the winter, 31% of our kids are passing that test. But I would like to sort of point out that kids who read don't pass this test. So it's a, it's a strange test. On page six, we are looking at our graduation rate, which is something we look at annually. And this is a celebration point. You can see that we are five percentage points higher than last year, which is great in our four-year graduation rate. And five-year graduation rate lags a year, right? Because it's a year behind. So that 64.6 is also new, which is 1.6 above last year. So what this is telling me is that all the work that we're doing, trying to keep kids in school and the Chelsea, the impact of the Chelsea Opportunity Academy is, is doing great things. Indicator eight, on the same page, we had 15 more students drop out in the month of February. And February is a short month. We had eight, that puts us above eight more than where we were last year and about a third of a percent above where we were last year. So if you look at the bottom chart, it breaks it out by category, you'll see that actually in regular ed students, we are better than we were last year at this time. We were, we're about 0.15, it's not huge, but the regular ed students are right on track for where we were. The L students is where we're really struggling, as you can see that we've had 46 L students leave us. And that is higher than last year. On page seven, you can see the details of the 15 students that dropped out last month. 13, as you can see, are location unknown, which means that they left so quickly, we didn't even get to talk to them and find out what their plans were. You'll see that nine are L and a majority of them were in grades 10 and 11. If you turn to page nine, will be our last indicator for the night, which is our mobility. We have officially hit, 1,000 students have either come or gone from Chelsea this year. We have had 111 in the month of February, either come or go. Overall, the middle school has gained 10 and the high school has lost nine net, like there's been more movement than that, but overall, that's how it's landed. So our mobility rate so far is 16.2%. That is lower than last year, a point lower, where we were at 17.3 last year. So it's a whole lot of numbers, but thank you, thank you. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent. Any questions from the school committee? Mr. Wilson?
Mrs. Kent, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
The winter, no nonsense word fluency correct letter.
Yep, our kindergartners, yeah.
What is your percentage that you want to be at? You said 31%, but...
So, at the top, right now, the, the goal is 75. But to be honest, the way that we're teaching reading now, this is not really a great measure anymore. We set this measure four years ago. And the way that we are working with students and trying, getting them to read and comprehend, this measure isn't doing it for us. And I think when we, we revamp this next year, you know, for the next five-year plan, we'll be using something else.
I think you have another question also. With this new hire that, hire that we have for the transit, I guess you would call it, transit officer?
Mm-hmm. Attendance officer, yep.
Say it again?
Attendance officer.
Attendance officer. Thank you. Will their job be also to help the dropout rate increase? Lower down, I should say, lower?
Well, we're hoping, I mean, we're hoping that with, by having more feet on the ground, that this location unknown, finding, you know, tracking kids down, trying to motivate them to come to school is part of that, yes.
Do you have a goal that you want, want that person to work for, work at or anything?
So we're, Assistant Superintendent, the lady's been working on that. We're putting, this person has just been hired. I think part of the plan is to sit down and work all that out, but yes, there will be goals and measures for how that goes.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? No?
Great, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the personnel update found in enclosure B.
I would like to commend this, the personnel update to the record.
Are there any questions regarding the personnel update? No? I do have a question, well, not a question, more so a comment. In the last few years, I have noticed that the demographic data did include a higher, a more diverse number. I would say now we're at 100% Caucasian. In the last few years, that number was, I would say, and correct me from wrong team, around 50, 60%. We did see a lot of diversity in the past and so I'm wondering if we have any answers as to why we are at 0% diversity.
Chair Garcia, that's an excellent question and it's something that we are working on. We have put systems in place, as, as we have two grants right now with the Barr Foundation and with the Five District Partnership, where we are explicitly working... and with the Five District Partnership, where we are explicitly working on recruiting a more diverse staff. Additionally, we have hired a part-time recruiter to go out and recruit, which we've never had. So that is, it is on our radar and we are working to recruit diverse staff.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Santiago? Sure. Okay, that scared me. I'm like, wait a minute, I know something's... Thank you for clarifying. Awesome.
We hired two people this month.
Thank you.
Yeah, last month, you'll see that we did hi- hire, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Kent.
But even so, um, we still need to work on it. We need to increase our numbers and that is something that our HR director is working diligently on. We are participating in several diversity grants. We are recruiting, we have some good news. And Christine, I apologize that I'm gonna spill the beans a little, if that's okay. Um, we have recruited our para-professionals to become teachers. And I believe we have about a good 15, 14, who are very diverse, who will be studying to be teachers and building our own pipeline from within. Because we know that our para-professionals are our most di-group, uh, diverse group. So if we can recruit within and build teachers from within and plug them in, provide them an education. So we are gonna celebrate next month and we are gonna have our first group of para-professionals that are involved in one of our programs that just got accepted. And Christine will get to introduce you to all of them.
Awesome, thank you so much. Ms. Santiago?
I wanted to commend Christine. Um, I really enjoyed, uh, being in different spaces lately with you and just really, even from last year, um, just when we had a gap and the way you're able to hire really quickly. Just really wanna acknowledge your work. Um, and also that, uh, to share that in the HR subcommittee, there was this discussion that the superintendent's referring to about this huge hire that, you know, we're fortunate that we're getting all this grant money, but there's also gonna be this huge opportunity to attract new talent, um, and, and making sure we have diversity of experience. Um, cultural competency and diversity is, uh, something that, you know, the, each, um, sorry, Christine has committed to and everyone here is committed to. Um, and I just wanted to add the plug that, you know, it is a community effort. And, you know, the, um, both the superintendent and the cabinet members have expressed to us that this is something that the community can really support in and really being able to identify people and share information about those positions as they become available. So it's something for the community to sort of know as we continue that process. But it's exciting to hear that the para-professionals will be having a pipeline because that, at the core, they are part of, key part of our community in the schools. But also thinking about the whole goal before us is gonna be, uh, exciting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Santiago. Any other? Mr. Jimenez?
I just wanna echo what Ms. Santiago was saying about our efforts so far in diversifying our, our teacher workforce, our, our staff. I, I think the work that we're doing is great. Um, and you know, you know, I just, I just wanna highlight for everybody how important this is, um, you know, not just for having a diverse staff and making sure that our staffing represents, um, the city of Chelsea and the diversity of our, of our state and everything. But also, this has a huge impact on our students. Um, you know, there is research out there that shows the importance of having teachers, um, and, and staff that are from the same background as students. And I just wanna, I, the work that you're doing is great and I'm, I'm really looking forward to seeing, um, the results. And, um, 'cause I think this is probably one of the most important things that we could be doing to improve, um, results and outcomes within our district. So thank you.
Awesome, thank you, Mr. Jimenez. I'd also like to add, um, we also, not only do we want to encourage our para-professionals to become teachers, but also our students, right? And so it's really important for our students to get involved in the early college program that we have. We do have an education pathway. So really encourage, if you're home listening, uh, try it out, teaching is not that bad. Um, and we need more teachers of color, so thank you. Um, next item on the agenda is the enrollment report, enclosure C.
And before I commend this to the record, I would like to note that we have 6,312 students. Um, our enrollment has increased this year by over 200 students. So that when you, when we hear about our class sizes being increased, it's also because we have increased enrollment across the board. Um, so, uh, we are not anticipating, uh, huge jumps next year, but we have increased dramatically this year.
Thank you, Dr. Bada.
So I would like to commend, um, this report to the record.
Mr. Jimenez?
Thank you.
Ms. Alfaro, sorry.
Just as we have the city delegate here, I would just like to highlight that, if you can help us, to continue to advocate for more space in schools. Because as you see, the number is increasing, we keep complaining about not having enough room for the students. And it is something that we need to really advocate for more, uh, schools, like buildings that we can, you know, add is and have, uh, the students with more space and the teachers also with more, uh, room to teach the, the students.
Thank you, Ms. Alfaro. Mr. Jimenez?
Um, so the, the number that we have here, um, how did, the number that we are allocated per pupil from, uh, from the state, that's the number that we have in October, um, I think, is that, is that right? And then, so then if any students that come in after, we would not be allocated those funds, right?
Correct, it is a year behind.
It, sorry?
The, the enrollment number, so this October will, uh, like this last October, next year's budget will be based on that. It's like, it's lagging. So this year, when we got Student Opportunity Act, we also increased by a certain amount of number and that was included in SOA. So it's, it's kinda, it's, sometimes it's la- it's lagging.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, moving on. Next item is the committee report, Ms. Hernandez?
I think I forgot my name for a minute.
I did, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Sad. I'd like to make a motion to accept the committee report.
Right, motion carries. Next, I know, I'm so used to first base, my apologies. Okay, next item on the agenda is unfinished business. We don't have any, so we are moving right along to new business. Consideration and action to approve a budget transfer in the amount of a million dollars to move funds from benefits, payroll adjustments, um, insurance to facilities, maintenance and transportation. Wait, I'm sorry, is that right, a million? Just making sure. Explanation, funds are available from the health benefits for current employees and retirees in the salary contingency account. Savings and health benefits are available since planned costs have not increased to the extent previously projected and, and a number of staff members have declined to take health insurance from Chelsea schools. In addition, the funds and salary contingency are not needed this year. The transferred funds will be used for one-time facilities expense, expenses. Consideration, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, can we get a roll call, please?
Consideration and action to approve a budget transfer in the amount of $1 million to move funds from benefits, payroll adjustments, insurance to facilities, maintenance and transportation. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Seven votes in the affirmative, the motion carries.
Motion carries. Next, consideration and action to accept a private grant in the amount of $2,000 from Dell. Explanation, Chelsea Public Schools has been awarded a grant from Dell's Legal Diversity Committee to support the law and public policy pathway at Chelsea High School. The funds will be used for transportation costs for field trips, supplies, food and other expenses in support of the program. Massachusetts General Law Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call?
Consideration and action to accept a private grant in the amount of $2,000 from Dell. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
One second. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Seven votes in the affirmative, two absent, the motion carries.
Motion carries. Consideration and action to accept a civics teaching and learning grant in the amount of $35,743 from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for school year 2019 through 2020. Explanation, the district has, has received a civics teaching and learning grant from DESI in the amount of $35,743 to support civics teaching and learning. The funds can be used for teacher stipends, contractual, con- oh my goodness, sorry, contractual services, professional development, student transportation, indoor costs associated with special events or experimental, experimental learning opportunities and other expenses in support of the program. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call?
Consideration and action to accept a civics teaching and learning grant in the amount of $35,743 from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for school year 2019, 2020. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Eight votes in the affirmative, one absent, the motion carries.
Motion carries. Consideration and action to accept 3,000, a $3,000 honorarium from the National Science Foundation for Participation in the Acceleration of Computing and Equity in High School Fellowship Project. Explanation, Chelsea Schools is participating in the National Science Foundation-funded program in the Acceleration of Computing and Equity in High School Fellowship Project. In recognition for the district's participation, the NSF is providing a $3,000 honorarium. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A, provides for the acceptance of gifts only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Accepted funding will be deposited into the Chelsea Public Schools gift account. Roll call?
Consideration and action to accept a $3,000 honorarium from the National Science Foundation for Participation in the Acceleration of Computing and Equity in High School Fellowship Project. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Eight votes in the affirmative, one absent, the motion carries.
Motion carries. Consideration and action to accept the Early College Support Grant from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in the amount of $60,000. Explanation, the Early College Support Grant is designed to support expansion and commitment to equity in early college programs designated in 2018. The funds will be used for stipends for tutors, curriculum alignment and professional development and for data specialists to track students participating in the program and analyze data among other expenses. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call?
Consideration and action to accept the Early College Support Grant from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in the amount of $60,000. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Eight votes in the affirmative, one absent, the motion carries.
Motion carries. Consideration and action to approve two homeschooling proposes, proposals for a Chelsea family. Explanation, the Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee has reviewed the proposals and has determined that both proposals have met the requirements of the Chelsea Public Schools homeschooling policy. All homeschooling, uh, proposals must be approved by the school committee. Roll call?
Consideration and action to approve two homeschooling proposals for a Chelsea family. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Eight votes in the affirmative, one absent, the motion carries.
Motion carries. Consideration and action to support the superintendent's recommendation to hire Assistant Superintendent Adam Delaney for student support. Explanation, Mr. Delaney is a contract employee and his contract has come up for renewal. Roll call?
Consideration and action to support the superintendent's recommendation to hire Assistant Superintendent Adam Delaney for student support. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
A definite yes for me.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Eight votes in the affirmative, one absent, the motion carries.
Motion carries. Congrats, Adam. Consideration and action to accept the terms and conditions in the March 5th, uh, 2020 through June 30th, 2020 employment contract for Assistant Super, Assistant Superintendent Adam Delaney. Explanation, the school committee sets compensation per MGLC 71, Section 59. Roll call?
Consideration and action to accept the terms and conditions in the March 5th, 2020 through June 30th, 2020 employment contract for Assistant Superintendent Adam Delaney. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Eight votes in the affirmative, one absent, the motion carries.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, communications. Do we have any communications to commend to the report?
There are no communications.
Awesome. Any announcements?
I have several. So, uh, one of my pri- priorities as superintendent is to be in schools. And I think, I believe I've probably said this every single time. And as I've been wa- doing walkthroughs in schools, I wanna, I, I do wanna highlight what I'm seeing in schools because this is the heart and the true work of a school leader in its being in classrooms. And that is probably the most important thing in, in my eyes as far as looking and monitoring instruction in the classroom. So at the Berkowitz, what we are, I'm highlighting is the universal design for learning that is evident in classrooms, across every classroom in that school. At the Clark Middle School, there is evidence of common planning time and literature that is culturally relevant. At the Brown Middle School, solid grade five instruction and teacher messaging to students. At Chelsea High School, students care and support each other. At Chelsea Opportunity Academy, the instruction is individualized and there is a focus, a deep focus on relationships. At the Early Learning System, uh, Early Learning Center, there are systems and structures in place to support early childhood learning at very high levels, where there's rigorous instruction for early childhood instruction and play. At the Kelly, there's small group instruction in each classroom where students are engaged in peer-to-peer interactions. And you go into the Kelly, you see small group instruction. At the Hooks, there is a math instruction that was, is differentiated for each learner and small group where each classroom has at least two adults. Um, and then at the Sokoloski, there was strong... Um, and then at the Sokolowski, there was strong English language learner instruction happening in this, in the classrooms that I visited. I have, I'm still, I have yet to visit the Rite, we got canceled and, um, I will report on that. Our winter sports season has ended. However, we still have one student competing in track. Um, congratulations to Stephanie Simon, who is a senior. She will be going to Nationals next week in New York City. And on 3/11 and 3/12, we have the All District Instrumental and Choral Events and then 3/17 is Student Government Day at City Hall.
Awesome, thank you, Dr. Bada. Any other announcements? Ms. Alfaro?
Just like to make an announcement for the middle schools ages 14 and through 21, that the Summer Youth Employment Program has begun and the application process is open at the Chelsea Collaborative. There will be tables, uh, at Chelsea High School that, uh, some of their staff from the Chelsea Collaborative will be there, uh, making those applications available for the students who wish to apply for the Summer Youth Employment Program. As well, I'd just like to also, uh, make the community aware that on March 8th, there will be an effort in the community. There will be newspaper distribution that is going to be happening. So if we knock on your doors, don't be afraid. It's, uh, people from, uh, the community and from the organization that I work, proudly work for, Chelsea Collaborative. And then we're gonna be, uh, just doing this educational, um, outreach on the most important subject, that is the immigrant rights. So we're gonna be knocking on the, uh, community on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alfaro. Anyone else? Ms. Carlisle?
Um, a couple of parents have brought it to my attention, uh, what is being done throughout the Chelsea Public Schools regarding the coronavirus. Is there anything you could tell the parents?
Sure, um, thank you, um, um, Ms. Carlisle for asking that question. Uh, it is on our, uh, definitely a part of, uh, our planning. And so on 2/28, we posted a letter to families just about precautions, what you could do to keep your students safe. It is on the front page of the website in Spanish and in English. Um, we also have met with the city side and have, um, plans in place should something happen and we have communication. I, um, have been in conversations with the city side, um, Chelsea Department of Health. So should something happen, I will be working collaboratively and closely with, um, the city, uh, Chelsea City Department of Health and we will, um, get our instructions from the Department of Health. So we have a, um, a city manager, Tom Ambrosino, had, has called a meeting with all the city leaders and so we discussed what ifs and contingency plans. So we are in, we have had those discussions. Additionally, uh, we have asked our facilities to increase, uh, the amount of cleaning supplies that they have available. So if something should happen where we have to close school and clean the schools, we would have those supplies ready to, to clean schools. But we do have a plan in place, we do have systems, we have discussed this amongst all the city leaders and should something take place?
I know with a couple of teachers I've spoken to said they have talked, talked to the children and the students in the, uh, classroom about, um, washing their hands and sanitizing and all that good stuff. So that's, that's good to know because the parents are kinda concerned, especially with all the, um, hype that's going on throughout the, um, whole, whole United States and other countries that, you know, what's going on with this virus. So I'm, I'm glad to see that we are doing what we're supposed to be doing to take care of them. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Carlisle. Mr. Jimenez?
I just wanna, I just wanna mention, um, I, I have seen kind of in social media and in other spaces that, you know, the Asian-American community is having sort of struggles around the fact that, you know, this virus kinda started in China. Um, so I just wanna, you know, make sure that, you know, when we're engaging with the, um, Asian-American community, you know, they're not more prone to having this virus. They are any, just like any other member of our community. Um, and, and we, we need to support them because, um, you know, the, the, I know that they have been experiencing certain levels of racism around the fact that this is, um, this started in China. Um, and so I just wanna make sure that, uh, some of our, uh, elected officials in other, in other cities have been kind of rallying around, um, uh, Asian-American restaurants, Chinese restaurants, um, 'cause for a little while Chinatown was a kind of a ghost town. Um, so if you have the opportunity, if you're gonna be going out to eat, um, maybe think about supporting an, an Asian restaurant 'cause, um, they have been hurting for a little bit.
Thank you for that comment, Ms. Jimenez. Any other comments? Mr. Wilson and then Ms. Santiago?
One thing is I wanna thank the families here in Chelsea for voting last Tuesday. Had a great, uh, increase in voting. But another thing is you're gonna have more people knocking your doors, uh, for the election in November as well as for September. And the other thing is to, um, let people know about the census report. Census starts also, so when people, people to the window, do something, but try to open the door.
Thank you.
Need the census to be, uh, everyone involved with the census to help us out.
Regarding the census, it is very important to us as a school system because that's where our, we receive, um, Title I, Title II and Title III dollars based on the, the, the numbers. So it, it, it does affect us and we need for everybody to get their count and, and, um, it, it is important to us as a school system and as a city.
Thank you, Dr. Bada and Mr. Wilson. Ms. Santiago?
Yeah, I'm just gonna re-echo the importance of the census. Um, this year we have the opportunity to do it online, so just reminding families, there's a number of organizations that have made themselves available in the city. Um, I know that Chelsea Collaborative is one of them. Um, and also just to make myself available, I think there's plenty of school committee members up here that if you need help, uh, it is, you know, in English and Spanish, which is a blessing for our community, but, um, just offering our support because it's super important. Um, and I know that folks had, you know, last year people were talking about preparing for the census this year. Um, there's a lot of questions around documents and anything that could, could be perceived as not trustworthy. And so I just wanna acknowledge that and, you know, if you need support or if you have questions, no matter big or small, to please reach out to us, um, and nonprofit organizations that are doing the work. Um, so just wanted to lift that, it's super important.
Thank you, Ms. Santiago. Go ahead.
Were short on what we were spending on net school spending, so I wanted to share. In the past five budgets, we can, we've increased our support to the school department so that in, in the current FY20 budget, our calculations suggest that we are now above net school spending by 5.2%. That is a turnaround of almost nine million in six years. So the city has stepped up on the city side. But I'd also like to thank the superintendent, Mrs. Kent, and all the principals at the complex and the 22 teachers I had the opportunity to work with and their students, present Louis Latimer to them, as I work with 22, uh, teachers and 620 kids who got the benefit to learn about Louis Latimer, African-American scientist who was born here in Chelsea in 1848.
Thank you and once again, thank you for your support. Any other last comments? Great, we have a motion to adjourn this meeting. Do you have a second? Awesome, meeting adjourned.